Lethbridge, Alberta. Of course, the viewers in the local area are very curious to find out about who's running in the upcoming municipal election. This election is a very pivotal point in our community and moving forward in the next four years. At this time, we would like to invite and introduce a very special guest to this special episode. And the reason why we're here is we want to get to know Rufia Doria, who is running as a council member. We want to give her a chance to speak to you and let you know what issues are important to her as a member of the community, but also representing everyone else within the community outside of her circle. So again, welcome, Rufia. Thank you very much for taking the time to be with us here on this special episode of Pride John Live today.
Good day, James. Thank you for inviting me. Yeah, James, my name is Rufia Doria, and I'm running for city council. I believe that my background can help come up with the responsible decision for the city. So that's why I'm running for the council. My background is a unique mix of professional, academic, and community experiences which equip me to the right skill to make a responsible decision for the city. So that's the reason why I'm running, James.
Excellent. And if we can delve into that just a little bit about your background and your achievements in not only education, but also in community. I understand that you are very active in various roles that already are really helping to move the community forward and more importantly, to unite a community.
Exactly, James. I just want to let you know that right after I finished my PhD from McGill University, I moved to Lethbridge and worked in the Lethbridge Research Centre. There, at the time, I feel so connected to Lethbridge mainly because Lethbridge is run like the economy of Lethbridge is based on agriculture. So that's why I'm very connected with Lethbridge. Then I'm also a local business owner. I run my immigration consulting business wherein I put all my, you know, like your emotion, your empathy, listening to the situation of different immigrants, different people who comes to Canada. And although they come to Canada as one, they also stay, they want to stay here in Lethbridge. And most especially, James, I was the president of the Filipino Association, Filipino Canadian Association of Lethbridge, Alberta. And I was also the vice president of the Southern Itmac Association of Alberta. So with those experiences, I really learned to listen to them, what are their concerns? And this make me, make me feel the needs are different needs of these people, this individual, that will be very important in contributing to the progress of Lethbridge. So that's why I am very confident that through listening to this concern, I can bring their issues to the table and help and help come up and use my skill set to decide what is the best for the community. So I have that feeling, James, that having my background, my experiences, and my leadership can represent them and also ready to lead them and serve the Lethbridge. That's a thought.
Well, I think that's a very important role and a very important experience is the ability to listen to people coming from different situations as we take it for granted here in Canada. We have a rule of law. We have a society that overall likes to help each other. And especially in Lethbridge, I mean, it's a smaller city, people are closer. I think there's more interconnection there. But I also think that at this time, whether you are paying attention to US politics or even some of the Canadian politicians that want to drive a divide between communities, that when someone like yourself comes in, it really helps to reinvigorate the acceptance, the tolerance, the education that I feel is important when you learn about other cultures, then it opens you up to being more accepting and supportive. I think that's an important thing that you really need to hear.
So, yes. Well, there are many programs, like as you said, based on the different levels of government from federal, from provincial levels. And we know there are many programs that are surrounding us in Canada, and you even mentioned other countries. However, James, for this particular situation now, what I'm trying to focus is on how we can help the municipal level of Lethbridge. So we want to focus on the issues, concerns of Lethbridge. So what I'm thinking now, James, is to help come up with the prioritization of our plans. Okay? So yes, there are programs that are, that can affect us. That is why there is a need for a skill to know how to weigh, how to analyze, what are the priorities? And mostly, we have to focus, what are the priorities for Lethbridge, for the citizens of Lethbridge? That is my focus when I'll be in the council.
Excellent. I know that one of the priorities for the Lethbridge community and a lot of communities across Canada, but specifically Lethbridge, is of course, mental health and criminality. Now, I do have some numbers here that when it comes to the consensus for the metropolitan area of Lethbridge is that 2024 is an exciting year in terms of numbers. If there is such a thing about getting excited about numbers, but the truth is, is that the crime severity index has actually shown Lethbridge to be a much safer community. Some of these numbers is that an 8% drop in 2024 of violent crimes as well as nonviolent crimes, such as thefts and drug violations, another decreased by 23%. This, I understand, is a contributing factor was, you know, proactive policing, community involvement, targeting offender behavior. These things are having a huge positive impact on the community. So how do you go forward continuing that momentum?
Exactly, James. That is the good thing. So what I'm proposing to the table is to continue with a strong community partnerships. You mentioned like the policing, we have also to look into the social services because we need to identify the root causes of this problems that brought to Lethbridge. That is why I want to invest more on public safety with good collaborations with different strong communities. And having said, strong communities, we have to recognize not only the different cultural communities, but also the private sectors. They have, they can also contribute to the development of the safe neighborhoods. That is one of my pillars, James, the safe neighborhood. We have to look into the root causes, maybe homelessness, the need to answer the question of homelessness. We have also, one of the root causes is maybe their addiction or a cause of mental health. And there, you need to consider all the parameters, James. We need also to be compassionate or with like coordinated response to our problem. So yes, that is already a good number. So in order to continue the momentum, you have to advocate that we need to have a holistic approach to meet the crime in the city of Lethbridge. So I really believe, James, that collaboration, collaborative work, partnerships, strong community discussions, our lines should be open, whether it can be for to address the homelessness, we need to address the mental health. But again, we need to be compassionate also to these people.
And I think that goes a long way because I think that in talking to people, as a journalist, I've traveled around the world, I've been in war zones and refugee crisis and all of that. But I think that no matter where you go in the world, and this is no different Lethbridge, is that where you find homelessness, where you find mental health and addiction issues, you also find a lot of hopelessness. And for people such as yourself to show that compassion, to bring a personal touch to those who are suffering, it may be that just that one little act that helps them to realize that they are valued, that people do care about them in the community. And it could be that point to push them towards recovery. Now, what do you see in the community in terms of maybe better access to healthcare, whether it's mental health supports at the municipal level or addiction recovery? How can the community move forward with improving the access?
Yes, I know that you are talking about most of the provincial programs, James. So to access, I think we need to advocate, we need to collaborate, we need to have a strong, a strong relationship with those communities that can help us with providing the services such as maybe we can go to social services to help us identify our other available services to help these people to assess whether they have mental health issues, they have other housing issues. We have to be very strategic in approaching this, the concerns of our community. So again, they are still, they are, they need some attention. We need to be very compassionate in determining what are the root causes. So moving forward, we will continue our collaboration with the services of different communities, services of, from provincial government. We can talk, we can advocate them to help move how to come up with a good program for the city of Lethbridge.
Excellent. Yeah, as I said, that's, that seems to be moving forward. When you look at the crime severity index, the numbers being reduced, I think also reflects on how the community is working towards sustainable programs to help those who are in crisis. So I think that's a positive, and I have no doubt that you will move forward to keep things going in the right direction. As we touched on just briefly in those segments, of course, housing comes up as a big priority. And I know that that's top of mind for a lot of the voters out there. So what is your vision to work with the federal, the provincial, and other partners to increase the availability and the access to housing for all individuals?
Yeah, I think from the city level, like from the municipal level, first, we have to build a more balanced strategic approach to our fiscal management. Okay, we need to, to look into, to review, to look into deeper on our budget. We need to determine whether these taxpayers, those taxpayers are, how do you call that? They can feel that their taxes were used in the right way. I mean, every dollar counts for them in paying the taxes. So what I'm proposing is first, we have to look into our own budget. We come up with balanced strategic approach for our budget, our, how do you call that? Our strategic plan. And then if we can determine that there's a need for us to collaborate, if there is a need for us to, well, to be, to have a partnership with regards to the program to the provincial level or to the federal level, then we start to work. We have to advocate to the provincial government that we need this in order to support for our project. So the thing again is to have prioritization. We have to look into what is the priority? Is this our priority for now? Then if it is, then we, we have to look for different avenues where we can find, we can find funding rather than increasing all, like putting all the burden in our taxpayers within the city. So for me, there, there is a need for us to study deeply, review what we have done. I think there is already the, the operating budget placed there, and then there will be a coming strategic planning for the budget. We have to look into the, into deeper so that we will know whether which one is the priority or not. Then we can move forward to advocating to other fundings, to have collaboration to other partners for us to, to like obtain some funding. Only to think that we have to prioritize, so what I mean just is not to put burden all the time to the taxpayers of Lethbridge. If we can find other sources of funding, that will be great.
And when we talk about funding, when we talk about taxpayers, when we talk about fiscal responsibility, which I think that you've got a good handle on and what you envision in terms of reviewing budgets and expenditures and all of that fun stuff. One of the big concerns, of course, with citizens as well is local infrastructure, whether that comes in the form of the wastewater treatment or with the bridges and transportation infrastructure. I think that there are a big difference in terms of what people expect and what's financially responsible spending. And with the federal government in terms of what they're doing for infrastructure projects across the nation, do you see yourself working with the other councillors and the mayor to really actively go after the federal funds for infrastructure?
That is a good question, Jess, because the, the issue now is we, the citizens of, especially in Lethbridge, were expecting a lot for the infrastructure projects. We're expecting a third bridge, we're expecting improvement of the water treatment, we're expecting housing projects. However, we haven't like have an idea of how much funding we have for these projects. So again, there is a need for, it's like a skill set for us on how to review, on how to determine what are the priorities. Because we cannot, we, we have to know, is there the priority, is this infrastructure the priority without sacrificing other services? There are other services too that are much, much needed for the city, I mean, for the community as a whole. Then that is why there is a good, a good way to do that. We have to look into the planning, the operation budget. It's not necessarily that, oh, there is a funding here that comes, we have to utilize this right away. We need to analyze. There must be somebody to look into, into it, and then review, test, and then is it ready for this particular project? Prioritize and look all other parameters. Or this is the important infrastructure now. Then the next step is, once you know that, you have to go out to the community, listen to them, have your ability to have conversation, make the lines open in order for us to know what, what are their, what can they say on this? What can they, what are the suggestions moving forward? Because we are serving them. We are looking into the taxpayers' money. It's not only for, like, we know, we know how to do, deal with, but we have also to listen to them and explain to them. Go out, serve the community. This is my skills. Like I, as a community leader, I can listen. Then once you listen, you know how to answer to them, how you are prepared because you know you already studied the advantages and disadvantages of the budget on the table, then you can answer to them. Yeah, that is my, my biggest service for them. Like I can go out, listen to them, and then bring back it to the table for discussions and deliberations. Then we can come up with a responsible decision, that is for the city of Lethbridge.
Excellent. Yeah, and I know that just on that subject, I know that there are people out there that see federal programs, they see provincial programs and say, oh, we can get money for this, we can get money for that. But what they don't really figure into that is that there is still a level of commitment from the municipal level in terms of the financial input into those projects. So it's not like the federal government's going to come in and pay 100%. The provincial government's not paying 100%. So there is still that burden on the taxpayers at the local level. And I think that that is a very important context or topic that you brought up, is that you want to make sure that you are not raising the municipal taxes without doing due diligence to make sure that maybe there are savings within the government that can be instead utilized as opposed to, you know, just automatically, some politicians automatically just sort of will raise taxes. And I think that your responsible look at the fiscal outlook of this city, I think, is very important, and I like that. Of course, we know that business is a big driver, whether it's agriculture, whether it's the small mom and pop shops or anything else within the community. What is your goal in terms of expanding or opening the doors and saying, hey, Lethbridge is open, bring your investment dollars our direction? What do you think that looks like in the future four years?
Yes, yes, I, I agree with you when you say, okay, Lethbridge is growing, okay, we have to invite investment, investors to come to the city. Yes, I agree with you. However, James, we have also to consider that we have to maintain the soul of Lethbridge. You know, Lethbridge is, it has a lot of potential. We, we can, we can expand, because it's growing, we can invite people to invest here. But again, we have also to have, I like your term, due diligence in looking into, are we ready? Are, are the taxpayers happy if we have to go on those directions? So we have to maintain, we have to listen to the constituents, to the people of Lethbridge. Are we ready for that? We have to look into the soul of Lethbridge. Personally, I really like to, to always go to the favorite store that I want to. They are there for so many long, like for so long, they, for so many years, so long. I like to go there because that is the soul of Lethbridge. Yes, we are, we are ready, we want to expand. But again, the important thing here is to have the due diligence if we are ready to move forward. Are we not stepping this people who loves to stay Lethbridge in this particular, particular way, Lethbridge as it is? Or are we just like opening our arms just to, to bring those new investors here? So it's, it's a matter of trying to understand. It's a personal, for me, it's a, it's a skill set to determine whether we have to, to do, to move forward in this direction or we have to study first. I mean, you need to know, you need to know, you need to listen to the people. That is the, the main reason why I want to bring my skill set to the table, because I want them to, to understand that we have this program, we are growing, Lethbridge is growing, there are so many investors who want to, to come to Lethbridge. That will, a good thing for the business community here. But again, we have to look the local businesses. Are they ready? Are they satisfied with the situation now? So we, it's a matter of listening to them, then thinking the best way in order for us to move forward. We have to come up with an informed decision, a responsible decision in order for us to move forward for progressive Lethbridge.
Well, I like the idea that, that you are taking into account that you're not going to sacrifice what makes Lethbridge special as a community, as, as a society, as a place that people have, you know, they love Lethbridge and that's why they are here. So I think that it's important that you are looking at it, saying, we're not going to bring investment in for the purpose of investment. We are going to bring it in where it helps to complement the city and to help us grow in the right direction. We've seen many communities that just opened the floodgates to investment and find out that it is actually a detriment to their infrastructure, to schools, to hospitals, to healthcare, to medical. And instead, what happens is that it actually backfires and you see people flooding out of the city because they lose that ever so important character and charm that had been there in the first place. So I really like that that is a focus for you. As we talk about infrastructure and other things, what do you see as important in terms of the education system and the school system within Lethbridge? How do you think that there could be improvements made from a municipal level for that? Because that's a concern of all parents, of course, is, you know, a good education for their children and helping them to be able to visualize the future after school.
Yes, especially for me, I really love people who are educated. It doesn't mean that educated that you have to attend the school, you have to come up with a PhD degree or higher degree. What I mean for that is for them to understand, know how the basics work. Okay? So I know education is a provincial government lookout. They are the one looking into the, the programs of the education. And in, since they are here in Lethbridge, we are, we are empathetic to the, the needs of the teachers here. And I, I also have to look into the, the effect of this to the parents and the kids. So I, the only thing I, I can tell now is if there are different means for the kids to be educated, to, to know how to, to learn the basics, to know the practical part of like growing, because they need to know the, like the relationship, they, they have to know, I can't answer more on the, how the kids will be educated. Well, sometimes we, you need to have this in, in place, the education in place in, in our school places. But again, that is why there are other programs beyond or out beyond the four corners of the rooms, there are other programs that are available for the kids. And all the, I think the city, the community also wants to, to, to look into those avenues, whether we can, how we can help with the situation.
Right. Well, and I think that that is a very realistic vision there because you have to recognize, of course, the education being the purview of the provincial government, whereas, of course, the local governments can not lobby the provincial government to help with, you know, where they may see at a local level shortfalls that the province is not seeing. But I really like the fact that you are talking about the, about the process more than the actual goal. And when I say that, I mean, I personally, you know, when you learn certain things like, you know, whether it is certain math skills or other things, and when you're in school, you're thinking, well, when am I ever going to use this? But I think that what gets lost is that it's not so much about the different skills that you're learning there or the different methods, it's about the process and learning how to think outside of the traditional way in terms of solving problems. And I think that's a big thing that's overlooked in education. You know, we can look at it and say, okay, well, I haven't used, you know, the geography, I haven't had to worry about. I haven't had to worry about what lake is in the middle of, you know, northern Alberta and, and identify it. But at the same time, it's about that thought process. So I think that you have a very good thought in terms of, you know, you have to focus on what you can control in the municipal level while still keeping those relationships open with the provincial and federal level. So I think that that is a big importance to the community. And some politicians lose sight of that. They've got these huge goals, but again, that fall outside of the purview of the municipality or at a provincial level that may be under federal purview. So I really like the way that you're looking at the future for Lethbridge and how you're working with not only the long-term generational residents, but all of the new residents as well. Because I think that one of the things, and you probably run into this quite often, is as communities are growing right now, there is a lot of polarization when it comes to immigration. And I think that what is getting confused is the legal immigration process and individuals who have been here maybe for generations through immigration programs. And instead, people are mixing that up with illegal aliens entering the country illegally and causing problems. But unfortunately, we are seeing too much on social media that really pushes all immigrants together in a negative way in many aspects. And I think that by what you're doing, you are setting a perfect example showing that, yes, there are immigration professionals that are helping people to enter the country properly, legally, and they are there to benefit. And that's where we started the show, talking about the positive, how people want to be in Canadian communities and they want to help grow the community. They don't want to take away, they want to add to it and build a future. So would you say that that is something that is important for the community to understand? That there's so much positive there?
Well, I'm so happy that you brought that issue, Jay. You know, me, I am an immigrant by, by myself, like I'm an immigrant here in Canada. Then the other positive thing is I am an immigrant related to immigration consultant. That is my business.
Yeah.
I want to let you know that we are looking into, as what you said, what is the proper way for them to come here and for the people to come here? And as you can see, all the people who comes here legally, they are contributing to the economy of Canada as a whole. And for those who stayed there, Lethbridge, they are working in a legal way. They are contributing to the economy of Lethbridge. So there are miss, maybe information or I don't know what kind of information that they are there. But for those people who comes here, works here and like, can you imagine they, we, the, the people who comes here, they left their family back home just to help. They, they want also to help their family back home. But at the same time, they are paying taxes, they are doing what the, the other members of the community doing in a legal way. So that is why there, there are miscommunication about immigrants. But I just want to let you know that there are also people here that are, help the, around the Lethbridge community. They have, they, they work hard and they contribute to the economy of Lethbridge.
Excellent, yeah. And I think that that's just an important message to be note there in the community. Because I think as, as we both agree, there's a lot of misinformation and disinformation out there. And the picture is just getting blurred in many contexts. And sometimes it is people that are intentionally trying to cause that divide. So one thing I know about Lethbridge is that it has always been a welcoming community, a very friendly community, very supportive to not only members of the community, but anybody coming in to visit. Now, with that, of course, is an important topic and that is tourism and visitors to the area. What would you say, and we're just going to have some fun here. And what is your favorite event throughout the year that you would really think outsiders should look at and say, hey, I want to go and attend this event in Lethbridge? What would you say is one of your favorites?
Okay, yes, Lethbridge is a vibrant city. I, I think we have a lot of events. The, the downtown Lethbridge are like very, very welcoming and very good to, to, to stay. So for me, I really like the, the different communities showcasing their culture. So for example, the Filipino-Canadian Association of Lethbridge, we have every month of June, sometimes it will happen in July, we are celebrating Heritage Day to showcase our Filipino culture. And moreover, if, as a former vice president of the Southern Alberta Ethnic Association, every ethnicity also, they have to celebrate their, their culture to showcase. We are here in Lethbridge, this is the culture that we can incorporate here. And we want you to, to see how we, how we perform, how we, how, how our culture looks like. Then we are bringing it here to you. So Lethbridge is a diverse area. We have a very diverse community, have a lot of different ethnic communities that have also different cultures that can help and share the vibrancy of the city. And if you come, have come here, especially during summertime, there are showcase of the African community, the Latino communities. And not only their, their talents, but also the food, that is the very important thing. The, the different food that they will serve, will let the people try. This is our delicacy back home. So it's very, very welcoming. For me, that is the very important thing that I want to, to continue to do, to support every communities. Because diversity is really a good thing for us to know more and let the people know our culture. So that's the thing that I want to, the thing that I want you to invite if you will come here during summertime, James.
You're right. And of course, you're talking right to the fat guy here, you got me at food. Well, that pretty much wraps up our time for today. So I would like to take this opportunity, folks, to open the door to, to remove and say anything else that maybe I've left out or overlooked or didn't ask about.
Yes, Jane, I just want to, to leave this to, I want to leave this to the whole community of Lethbridge that I want, I want you to know that I'm running to serve, not just to represent, but I want to serve with my technical background, my entrepreneurial experience, my deep community involvement. I'm ready to listen, I'm ready to lead and to act. I champion affordability, effort, safety and innovation. So Lethbridge can thrive for everyone. Let's shape the future of our city together. Thank you for this opportunity, James, thank you so much.
Excellent. It's been my pleasure to speak with you today. I can't wait to have other conversations down the road as we discuss your successes in office when that happens. And of course, if people have any questions for you or want to follow and get more information, what is your website or, or your social media that they can reach out and follow you?
Yes, yes. In fact, James, we are handing flyers to, we try to hand flowers house to house. And in that flyer, I have the select vote for Ruffadoria. And at the back, I put my resume and my platforms there. So they can find, they can find my email address, they can find my website, ruffadoria.ca. And I have also indicated my phone number if they want to chat me by phone.
Excellent. And we'll make sure that we have the website up on the screen here for people to be able to get more information and to reach out with any concerns or important topics that you would like to gather more information in terms of the stand and the goals and the future. I think that with the pool of candidates that are coming in for this election, I think that the future of Lethbridge is moving in the right direction. I think there's a lot of positive outlook there. And I really wish you well in your campaign and may that be successful. For viewers out there, once again, you can find Ruffa's website and other information on not only here on the screen, but we'll also post it with live links in the description. If you have any other questions or topics that you would like us to discuss on the program, by all means, you're welcome to, to send us messages as well. And for the final, I would just like to thank again our episode sponsor, that's Kary Movers. They provide long distance moving in Western Canada for several decades. A local family owned and operated company serving Western Canada. You can find them online at www.karymovers.com. That's K A R Y movers.com for all of your long distance moves in Western Canada. Once again, Ruffa, I would like to thank you and I would also like to help or sorry, to acknowledge and thank Frances for setting this all up with us. And I know that she's working hard, it's a family effort, I love to see it. Yeah, may the future be extremely bright for Lethbridge and for you and your family.
Thank you so much, James, thank you.
Thank you.